Chris, I have six o'clock, so why don't we put the colors up? Good evening, everyone. Would you please join me in pledging the allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, hello, everyone. You have joined the May 25th, 2021 meeting of the Town of Canadega Planning Board. I think everyone's here, but let me go through a roll call, make sure we got everyone. Ryan Satchak.
I am here.
Gary Humes.
I'm here.
Bob La Course. Amanda Van Laket. And I'm Chuck Euler. And we're also joined by staff, including our Recording Secretary, John Robitella. We also have with us our township, our town engineer Lance Braybame. We also have our town and planning board attorney, Chris Nadler.
Hello.
And I see for the first night, we are joined by our new town planner, Shawna Bronzak. Hello, Shawna. So, with that being said, let me go through our procedure for this evening. We are going to take each application in the order in which they they show on the agenda. We will ask the applicant or his representative to make a presentation as to what they ask, what they are asking for from the planning board, whether it be special use permits, site plan, subdivision, et cetera. The town, excuse me, the planning board will then respond with questions and comments to the applicant. I will then go to the general public, to anyone who would like to ask a question, make a comment regarding the specific application. Please get our attention by using the raise your hand button on the on the Zoom. Or somehow just wave at us and one of us will see you and we'll recognize you. So when recognized, please give us your name, address, and you may proceed with your comments. If there's no questions on that, I will now go to the privilege of the floor. I'll take that next. Anyone in the audience who would like to address the planning board on an issue that is not on the agenda? If you do, please now raise your hand or get our attention. Okay, I don't believe there is anyone, so we'll move on. We have a couple continued, a continued public hearing and a new public hearing this evening. The new public hearing was duly advertised in the Daily Messenger on May 18th. And the continued hearing was continued from our last meeting. Or was it two meetings ago, John? In any event, it's a continuation of an ongoing application from Adlon Emerson Road. And all that being said, we'll move to reopening the hearing on Mark's Engineering ATL Contractors representing Tom Sawyer, owner of property at a yet-to-be-determined address at Emerson Road. And they are seeking a single-stage site plan approval as well as a special use permit. So let's, so we'll have two actions to take on this this evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Gary.
So I think Brendan has phoned in a few minutes ago and he is running late. So I would like to to request that we take the two Mark's engineering's and move them to the after the other two and move them a little later in the agenda. And and proceed on with Marathon Engineering first. That's all right?
That is, that is fine. Hope Mr. Marx shows up in due time, but we can do that.
Yeah, I think he is gonna show up. He's just had some challenges getting there by six tonight, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, he contacted me. He identified that he thought maybe 10 minutes behind schedule, but he thought pushing it to the end would allow him enough time to get on.
Okay, we can do that. So somebody just keep an eye when he signs on and sort of let me know. In the meantime, we can keep that public hearing in abeyance and move on to a new site plan application from Marathon Engineering represented, representing David Gill, owner of property 4495 Davis Landing Drive. Mr. Gill is seeking a single-stage site plan approval for, in addition to a single-family dwelling, including a driveway, pickleball court, retaining walls and steps and other improvements. Mr. Gill needed to go before the ZBA and get their blessing on this application before we could take action. And from what I understand, the ZBA was not able to meet last Tuesday. So there's been no decision rendered by the ZBA. Chris, am I correct that the ZBA intends to meet on June 1st?
Yeah.
Okay, if that occurs, then we could take take this up at our June 8th meeting. Okay, Chris?
Yes, that's okay with me.
Oh, okay. Either Chris, doesn't matter. All right, as long as they get an affirmative. So we will postpone any decision on on this particular application, CPN 21034, until our June 8th meeting, pending adjudication by the ZBA. Okay, next is Anthony here.
I'm sorry, Chuck. Do we need a, this is Ryan Stachak. Do we need a motion to postpone that if it's on the agenda? Or just to carry it over to the next meeting?
Well, we we could call it continuance. It's
either way.
Yeah, usually a continuance is as a result of the applicant asking for continuation or there's information and we're seeking after our discussion. But if you want to make a motion, Ryan, you've got the you've got the mic. Do so.
Do we want to hear a presentation about this, Mr. Nadler, or should we not do that till the June 8th meeting?
I would think you want to wait until the June 8th meeting so that the plans are finalized from the zoning board.
To make a motion to continue this application to the June 8th, 2021 meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Gary. Motion by Ryan, second by Gary to continue this discussion on the site plan to the June 8th meeting. All in favor? All right, opposed? Okay. Again, we'll move on to assuming that Anthony's out there and if you are Anthony, we'll look at an application from Venezia Associates representing the Canadega Country Club, owner of property at 3280 Fallbrook Park. And the country club is seeking a single-stage site plan approval for a 40 by 80-foot event structure on existing concrete pad and the renovation of an existing accessory structure.
Hi. Oh, good evening. Erin Joyce here. Anthony is also on the call, but I will, I'll lead the presentation tonight's. And then if we have specific questions he can help with, he can chime in. My name is Erin Joyce, on behalf of Joyce Consulting Group and Venezian Associates, working for the Canadega Country Club. Tonight, we're here to seek site plan approval for a, it is labeled on this site plan as a tent, but after review with the planning department, it's going to be an open-air, permanent wood frame style pole barn type pavilion. So it's not going to be like a membrane tent. It's going to be more of a timber frame style pavilion. The tent itself, the proposed tent pavilion is in generally the same footprint as the existing tent area. There's a concrete pad there today that they will be placing this new structure on. There'll be minimal revised patio and sidewalk work to kind of orient the new structure within the site. And then there will be some modifications to the existing maintenance barn that you can see is hatched in the edge of the area of the barn that's closest to the tent area is going to be revised with some bathrooms and catering kitchen space. So that's the work that we're proposing. There's no really change in impervious area. We're gonna, we're gonna add some stormwater management systems, some infiltration piping and a dry well to pick up any potential runoff from this roof structure. There's really nothing there as far as stormwater controls or collection system today, so that will certainly be an improvement. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So please let me know.
Thank you, Erin. I'll open it up to the board.
Hi, Erin. This is Ryan Stachak. I remember this application from a few years ago. So yeah, we welcome, I'm sure, the stormwater improvements. Can you talk about the gutter connections specifically? And I see that it's on the west side. Can you talk about the gutter connections on the east side?
Yeah, so we had anticipated the gutters on the west side or the lakeside, the west side. If there would be proposed gutter locations on the east side, they would tie in very similarly. You know, as the final gutter layout goes, that would go, you know, into a similar collection trench into that dry well. So the intent is to pipe the downspouts to the dry well and underground, and especially on the lakeside where there isn't really much space for the water to run overland into any collection system. That's why we, you know, showed that at a minimum, but we will, if there are downspout gutters on the event side, you know, tie them into that dry well.
So that would be the same dry well, so maybe they they would go at the corner where I'm seeing the paver walkway? And then the gutters would go underground and then over to that same exact dry well?
Yeah, yeah. And that would be, the collection pipe itself is perforated and with an infiltration component. So once the water went into the collection pipe, that would be perforated with stone and then it would tie into the dry well.
And that's, and I think that you guys, like Anthony and you guys have done those trenches pretty often. Yeah, we both have children here, Erin. I can't wait to get back into person here as soon as possible, Mr. Chairperson. So and
Don't bring your kids with you.
No. And so that, I think that's, those are my main issues is just making sure. And then I'm interested to hear about the proposed renovation of the barn too, because if I remember, that barn is really close to that, to that inlet coming into the lake there. And that's always been like a burden for, I think, the country club. I don't know if they have any plans to kind of, last time we saw them, they had no plans to kind of renovate that because it was, it's pretty old. I didn't know if there was any developments on that, so, but, so thanks.
Can someone address the improvements inside the
So in, in, inside there, there's that section that's going to be renovated and it's going to have bathrooms and a kitchen and a changing room. It's going to support the event tent, the event structure, the barn. So it'll be renovated for bathrooms. I believe there's a line kitchen and then also a changing room, like a bridal suite that will support events that are at the the event center. So people aren't going back and forth all the time to the main, the main club. It's a basically just be there to support, you know, the weddings, the gatherings that are hosted in that structure, so.
That's awesome, because it will be an awesome event center then, right? Like it's legitimizing that.
Absolutely. It definitely leaned favor to to the country club doing more cohesive representation of the plan, so people aren't going back and forth. And it just kind of creates its own entity for event center.
Erin, this is Bob. Are you going to add any landscaping to the lakeside for shoreline guidance?
Um, I don't know of what specifically the country club had for landscape improvements. Anthony, do you know?
I do not know of any better plans right now. I know Dave Hanlon is on the call. I don't know if he, the architect that designed it, I don't know if he is there, if he has any ideas for landscaping, but as of right now, I don't, I don't know what the plans are.
That was going to be a tent, thinking might come up and down, but now a permanent structure and how we're gonna go by the shoreline guidance and kind of
Chris, do you have any of the elevations that are available that were provided?
Looking at the director, I don't think I do have any elevations or anything. I just have photos and stuff.
Well, that's certainly a consideration as far as providing some landscaping on the lakeside and whoops, and those trees that were in that picture, they didn't show in the plan, but I know they were put in, I think, as part of a previous application. Yep, those. So Erin, this is going to become a wooden structure. So I assume it'll be, have a wooden you to it, a look to it. It will not be the stark steel frame that you have now. Will the sides of the tent still be, are this structure pole barn? Can you drop the sides of the structure, the siding?
Kind of so, sorry. No, I was just trying to see if I could find an image I could share with
Yeah, you have a cut.
Erin, this is David Hanlon. I've got all the renderings that we've done for the project. There's, we have 2D elevations and 3D renderings all prepared. I'm sorry, they didn't get submitted with the site plan, but they, they're available for you, the planning board to look at.
Is it possible to share them now somehow?
If someone wants to share the screen with me or allow me to share a screen, I can pull them up.
I'll make you a co-host for a few minutes, okay?
Okay.
Behave, Dave.
So hopefully I'm pulling this up. Tell me if you're seeing what I'm seeing.
Well, we're seeing a building with a cupola.
Yeah, okay. So these are 2D elevations. I guess I don't have the 3D elevations, but this gives you a very good idea of what's being being prepared. Let me zoom in for you. This is the lakeside.
That's, I think, saying east side.
Yeah, forget the, so now you can't see that. This is the lakeside. So this is the west side. We'll have overhead door, glass doors that pull up, so it'll be like an open pavilion type environment. Dormer windows above that and then two cupolas. So it'll be kind of a traditional styled building. This is the other side. This is actually the east side facing the golf course. And again, these will have some openings here that lead back to the toilets that we're adding at the card barn. Let me pull over the other side. Sorry, not going as fast as I should. Hold on a second. And then that's the, this is the side that faces
Clubhouse.
The clubhouse, yeah. So it's, you know, fairly traditional looking structure, gamble-shaped roof, dormers and glass overhead doors.
Well, getting back to the lakeside elevation, Dave, and then can talk a little bit about what Bob had brought up. Maybe some shrubs and landscaping either side of those doors would sort of add to the the look?
Yeah, we happened to soften this up with some foundation plantings and, you know, they want the participants to be able to walk in and out of the doors. But I think to the left and the right, I think you're right, this could be softened up quite a bit with some foundation plantings.
Okay, but on the lakeside, you go off the pad, you're going down the bank to the lake, right?
Yeah, there's not a lot of space there. So you're on grass, pretty much. It's, you know, just walking out onto the grass.
Okay. All right, well, if that could be a commitment on your part to soften it up with some shrubs either side of the the raised doors, that would be, the overhead doors, that'd be very helpful.
Okay.
Am I reading it right that the the height of the building is 29 feet?
It's 29 feet to the ridge, correct. And then we're in the community commercial district and 35 feet is the maximum height.
And actually might be like 45 or more because of community commercial.
Okay.
Either way.
But either way, we're well within the height restrictions and everything, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, they don't count the cupolas and stuff because it's not all space is part of the elevation.
Okay.
And Ryan brought up another issue. Will you back up on the Fallbrook? Is there a flooding issue there or has there been flooding or has it ever overflowed its banks? Or I guess it could, has it though?
One thing they did do when they built that pad is because it's in a flood zone, they built it two foot above the flood elevation of the lake. So it meets all the NF, or the FEMA requirements as far as flooding and elevation.
The barn does?
Yeah.
Okay.
693. Something.
Okay. Well, then the only other issue back there is a lot of the building materials you have laying around. I would be concerned that maybe at some point if the water did get up over the banks, that it can float those pieces of plywood out into the lake. So I would certainly consider as part of this project, clean up the the back of the barn.
That'd be from the country club. That would be no problem.
Okay. Is there any additional lighting proposed either on the barn or on the pole barn or the, in the parking lot or anywhere?
You know, we might have some soft lighting, but right now we don't, we have not proposed any up, you know, upward mounted building lighting.
Okay. I know some of the neighbors in the development next to you were concerned when you're, you're working on the dock about lighting under the dock and here, this is certainly going to be above grade and if you can minimize, well, at the very least, you've got to have cut-off lighting anyway, so.
Right.
Please provide that. But no, no, no poles, nothing else that you're putting out in the parking lot, probably be attached to the building itself.
Chris, do you want me to stop sharing?
It's up to you.
Yeah, unless anybody has any questions.
Yeah, I'm good.
The last thing I have is just, is that the color, the hue that you're going to use on the
This is pretty washed out. You know, we might have a little more deep, richer earth tone color, just to settle it down.
That would be great.
Yeah.
No white.
No way. Yeah, it won't be a white barn.
I think it looks awesome.
Yeah, yeah, that I, I'm glad you shared that with us. No way I visualized it looking like that. That's, it's gorgeous.
What I'm, on the right-hand side of that picture we're looking at there, yeah, right, well, right there, to the left, into left. It looks like that's like a pergola or something. It's extending, is that what that is or?
Yeah, there's, there's a paved area out there already and we're just putting a pergola over that. It's kind of sets up the entry. Sorry. Yeah, so it sets up the entry side. This is a one large glass door that goes up, so it's a pergola in front of that. And that's so also people can stand there in a little bit of shade. If it's a hot day, they can watch the wedding from that side.
Okay.
And the bar is to the left.
Yeah, that's an existing bar, bar right there. It's kind of working within the same footprint of what's there. In fact, actually the same footprint.
Oh, I think it's really good. And I guess I'd like to add too, I think, from Chuck, from the lighting perspective and also from a noise perspective. You know, I would think that this structure would reduce the amount of noise that's let out to the community, surrounding community. And the light right now that's inside the tent is pretty, you know, pretty obvious to everybody. And I think having a structure around it with lighting inside should reduce any, any lighting that is emitted further out of this structure too. So I think it's a, it's a win-win from that perspective as well.
Yeah, I think the tent looks like a glowing spaceship.
Right. This is going to help, help that a lot. I think it's, it's going to be great for the sound.
Okay, anybody else from the board?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to kind of piggyback off of Gary. Like, I think that this is a cool project to see that's happening at the top end of the lake and kind of fitting in with the economic development that's happening at the top of the lake. And it would a nice place it will be for people to go visit and like go be able to walk down to Kershaw, you know, and it kind of fits into, I think it fits into the character of our community. And I think, I think it's a welcome development, at least from my perspective on that part of town. So thanks a lot for bringing it forward. It's cool.
Okay, I'm going to go out to the audience. If anyone would like to ask a question, make a comment. Now's the time to do so on this particular application.
If you want to, you're welcome to unmute yourselves.
And give us a say hey. Okay, I think we've given them enough time. So let's move on to deliberations. While you're pulling up the resolutions, Chris, I will let it be known for the record that the county planning board did not really have any comments on this application. The ECB was concerned about the roof runoff, which we discussed. They were also concerned about the stockpile of materials behind the barn, which we discussed. Jim Fletcher had a comment on the water main. He said, there's a question as to where the main runs, so I guess it's between Anthony and Jim, they'll have to figure out what they're tapping into. And the sewer, county sewer district wanted to see more details on the lift station and the force main. And I guess Lance has covered that as a condition in the, in the resolution regarding the site plan. So all that being said, we're dealing with, if we're ready to move on, we're dealing with a seeker type two. And I'd be willing to entertain a motion, a bundled motion for both the seeker and the site plan. If you so like.
All right, this is Gary. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve a single-stage site plan approval and a, recognize a type-two seeker resolution for Venezia Associates, representing Canadega Country Club at 3280 Fallbrook Park, CPN 21-036.
Okay, could we just have a peek at the conditions again for the site plan? I think they're SOP. They have Jim's, Jim being the condition, they have the county sewer as a condition. Anybody have anything else like to add?
For line guidance.
Recognize they're going to put some plantings on that.
Yeah, yeah. Let's can do, let's include that as a condition that as discussed, shrubbing plantings we placed on the lakeside of the new structure. You have that, Lance?
Got it. I'm adding it in.
Anything else?
Not from my end.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, a second to
Chuck, we need a second. I'll second.
Now we do. Thanks, John. We have a motion and now we have a second for both a seeker type two and a site plan approval for the Canada Country Club. All in favor?
Aye.
Those? Okay, good luck, folks.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for your help.
All right. I see the late brand marks has showed up.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. I just read your emails about saying you'd be late, so.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's fine. We're, we're going to double back.
Save the best for last, right?
Well, you're, yeah, the best, spray after you is the best, yeah. We're going to double back and reconvene the public hearing regarding the We're gonna double back and reconvene the public hearing regarding the ATL contractors representing Tom Sawyer Emerson Road property for a single stage site plan approval and special use permit. And there'll be two actions, as I said earlier, involved. One on the site plan, one on issuing the special use permit. Well, three actions if you count the seeker. And let's see, I think last we talked, we sort of sent you back to do a little bit of dressing up the plan. We asked you to to look at the uptown study and the form based code draft. And Brennan, I thank you very much for looking at that. I think what you're presenting this evening is, is form based code light. And I think that's, we certainly appreciate that. And I think it's something that would certainly get that area sort of kicked off in the right direction. Minus us having a formal code and regulations to go by, but at least it's I think you're, you're in the spirit of what we're trying to do up on uptown. And I think for a vehicular service building, you've done, you made quite a few amenities that will be positive to the community is hopefully also to your client. So if you want to just go through it real quick as to what you changed from the last meeting, I would certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, so discussion was had about the limits of paving. So we hear this plan shows us what, what's going to be paved in the dark gray and then the light gray being gravel. Added a few more plantings in the front of the building, kind of going off that uptown code and, you know, dressing up the front of the commercial building. It is a steel building, engineer metal building. Just to give it a little bit more flair at the front. Also looked at the code, you know, relating to what's the proposed use in this area, which is commercial and, you know, was surrounding by automotive service and sales on the on two, on the, the 332 side. And then there's a vacant commercial parcel on the, the other side, the, the east side, which is the corner of Fire Hall and Emerson. And then the residential is on the opposite side of Fire Hall. So I was looking at that whole uptown study, like, you know, making sure that this commercial use fits and that there were not right up against what would be planned for all residential. So we have a commercial property next to it, which will be on the corner, which will also screen this off from some of the residential on the opposite side of Fire Hall. That's the one that does get developed. Similar things we've done is addressed a lot of the comments that Lance has made in his engineering letter, our engineering review letter. So yeah, we, I think we also gave you just a quick picture of a steel building, kind of what it'll look like. And that's, that's the gist of it. Oh, we added, we bumped out the parking on the south side of the building, like we've mentioned before, some more equipment storage there. Also more access in and out of the, the south side of the building, so.
You added a trash and recycling enclosure.
Yep, that's correct.
Corner, lower, lower right corner of the parking lot. Yes, you did go through Lance's letter and address them item by item. And Lance, are you comfortable with the responses you got from Brennan?
Yes, I, I believe that they addressed, if not all of them, most of the comments will be finalized in a review and forwarded back to Brennan upon completion, but I'm, I'm comfortable.
Okay. Board members. Any comments?
Brennan, I would just say, great job. It looks really good. We talked last time wavering that buffer on the north side. Do we need to make mention of that, their chairman?
That should be in the conditions, yes. Of approval.
East side, right?
Whatever the top side, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, east side.
And then when we talked last time, are you gonna make a sign out front or is there not going to be a sign out front?
We don't have a plan for a sign right now.
Looks good.
Brennan, I had a question on that easement, that 20 foot easement, wide drainage easement. Is that, is that an existing easement or is that a proposed easement?
It's existing. I think it's.
Okay, and I think on the one plan it should as proposed, that's.
We have a proposed easement, that's kind of that dash dot line there that goes around the, the new stormwater facility and out to the road. That's for the town to, if they ever had to maintain it. The, the pond that, that the owner should maintain. But the, and there's a separate easement, which is that 20 foot wide drainage easement that crosses a lot from east to west. That's most likely in the name of, you know, Ontario Honda and the other properties there for a drainage ditch that goes through there.
Okay, so it's from the, the owner of this property to the Honda dealership.
Most likely.
Okay. You have, did you reduce the number of parking spaces or did you just pave part of it and gravel the rest?
Same number of parking, I want to say it was in the 60 round. Stay, just, just showing the pavement and then the gravel.
Chris Jensen, if he's showing less than is required under the zoning, does, does he need a waiver from us, which we certainly have the power to do?
Because he's asking for a special use permit, everything that is shown in the plan can be waived without a waiver request by the planning board. Is the planning board, he has to just prove that he only needs this many and the planning board can either accept or reject his explanation.
Well, going back to the buffer then, does that include the, the buffer?
Pretty much everything on planning board and site plan approval, the, the planning board can waive.
If, if, if I recall, there were, there were more than enough parking spaces
Oh, yeah.
For the square footage. Matter of fact, I think we talked about possibly land banking some of them and they said no, they just go ahead and do it. So I, I don't think there's any issue with the number of places.
I think we're providing everything that's required by code.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then some.
Yeah, right.
I, I think it's right to the code, I'll be honest with you.
Okay.
But I think Mark Brennan is that, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, but I guess what I'm hearing is that if you don't want all of those spaces, we can waive those requirements of in code.
We'll take them.
Yeah, kind of discussion we had last time, like, because I said, hey, do we, if we don't need them, let's not put them there, but they said they'd like them just because of the long term. There might be vehicles or there might be trucks or extended things that might, you know, go use up two or three spaces or something like that.
Right, right.
Yeah, and since that area is mostly, it's more, more pervious, I think that also
Right.
Less concerned.
No, I think it's good. I'll just, I'll just add too, I, I like Brennan, what you did with the you know, landscaping and around, I think it's, I think it's gonna dress up the, the building quite a bit. It's gonna be nice.
Just for the board certification, in terms of the form based code, a lot of the items that are brought up in that code that are addressed on this plan includes the sidewalk easement, which allows for pedestrian access in the future. A more of an earth tone type building. There's certainly, as we talked about, the landscaping. The lighting, I, I think the pole lighting you're proposing is that the height that's recommended in the, in the new code. You, you do, you're using cutoff lighting, which is good. One other thing, I think we brought up last time Brennan, was the caliber of the deciduous trees that you're going to put out there. I think you had two inches and three inches. So any place you have two inches, make it at least two and a half.
Yep, will do. Just one there, I see.
Yeah, just the one species. Okay, I'm going to open this up to the public. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to address the board with any comments, questions. Now would be the time to do so. Okay, hearing none. I think we're just want to check to make sure the third parties are okay with this. We got no comment from the county planning board, no comment of any substance. They did mention the landscaping. Landscaping was also an issue with ECB as well as the runoff quantity and quality. We talked about MRB's review. Jim Fletcher really didn't have any comments. The sewer district mentioned the floor drains and any pre-treatment you may have to do for that, so that would be addressed with them. And I think we have as a condition of approval, the sewer district being made whole and satisfied as far as what you intend to do there. All right, well, let's take the seeker and the site plan first. I think we do site plan first and then special use second. Is that correct? Chris, Chris?
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
All right.
Speaker, site plan, special use permit.
Very good, and we'll take it in that order. Since this is a unlisted action, it does have a part one, two, and three involved. I will, I will make a motion that we approve or adopt a determination of non-significance. And we classify this unlisted and we accept the part one as submitted by the applicant and respond with the town's parts two and three. And I would look for a second, I'll make that motion.
Second, Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda. Okay, motion second, all in favor? Okay, moving on to the site plan. Okay. Someone want to handle that? Do we get the right date of the plan?
I'll make.
29th, okay. Yes, man, I'm sorry.
No, you're, no worries. I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for CPN 20-0, 030 5351 Emerson Road. Marx Engineering, representing ATL Contractors.
Okay, have a second. Conditions? Anything good?
The one condition regarding the landscaping schedule, they'll be updated to reflect two and a half inch caliber.
Okay.
Total of eight site plan conditions.
Chris, you want to scroll down and see the other two? Okay.
Do we need anything with that, with that boundary, the wave that, does that have to be a condition?
Buffer, the buffer.
I added it to the findings as a dial, as a, as a discussion item. Ultimately, the board granted the waiver from that section of the code. Is that, is that okay with you guys and Chris?
Well, according to Chris Jensen, that that'll happen as part of our issuance of the special use permit will grant all waivers. Is that?
So that's the right way to handle it so far. Leave it in the findings on this one.
Okay.
Very good.
We have a motion and did we get a second?
Yeah.
Okay, motion is second to approve the site plan for the vehicular repair station out on Emerson Road. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Let's move on to special use permit. And the only thing unique about this from what we've talked about is the statement of operations
Right.
that Brennan submitted. Hopefully everyone got to read them. Is there any questions as to their intent as far as operating the facility out there? The only question I had. I think one point Brennan, you said that there would be no sales of vehicles, strictly as maintenance and service. Then I think in the statement of operation, it talked about potential selling or having 20 used vehicles for sale on the property.
Yeah, that was, it was a little bit of a late change, you're right Chuck. The, they did. The, the, and the owner is actually on, on the call here too. The, they didn't want to be pigeonholed to not be able to sell a used car, piece of equipment on the front of the property or in the property, should I say, on the property for, you know, that that they, the onset that they have that, you know, need for it. It's not necessarily going to be a full-time sales lot, but
Our town code reads that no motor vehicle sales can be done in the CC zoning district without a variance or without a contract with the major retailer, something like that. So that would kick it back to the beginning and require a variance.
No, so is the CC cover the Ontario Honda and all that too?
That's contracts with a national distributor, so they're allowed to.
So if you had a national distributor like say Caterpillar, I'm just throwing that out there, that would be available for sales.
You would be allowed to sell 10% or something like that of the overall sales of new vehicles or something. I, I'd have to go back to the code.
So we can maybe classify that as, as per the CC zoning code. He can offer sales, as long as it complies with that code, right?
Except for you're asking for a special permit right at the moment, which has very detailed requirements, what you spell out in your statement of operations.
Well, so that the only options here are remove the sales completely or come back again, right?
Correct.
Why don't you say sales in accordance with the town code? Would that work?
Okay.
No, I'm asking Chris, because I don't have the statement of operations in front of me. Does that make sense?
Would that work?
It's up to the planning board. I mean, we could, if you want to word it as a condition of it, that only sales of used vehicles are, will be in association with new vehicles as per town code with principally permitted uses in the CC zoning district.
Yeah.
Yeah, send that to me, Chris.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it'd be sales in accordance with the town code, right? So.
My concern, and I didn't realize that part of the code.
As a condition of approval. I didn't, I, that's the first I read that, sorry.
My concern was if you did sell used vehicles there, that you not have them out front, that you have them back in the gravel area available for people to come in and look at, but not to display them out in front of the, the building we worked so hard to dress up.
It's against town code. I think to park vehicles in our town on the grass also, right?
Yeah, we're, we're talking stuff like in the, in the normal, a scheduled parking spot would be offered for sale. I think more so like, you know, you listed on, on the internet, someone comes, looks at it.
Then you'd be using up parking spots that are supposed to be for customers and stuff. So usually when you're doing sales of vehicles, you have to say, this is the sales area. This is the customer parking area, this and that. So if it's going to sales, I would say it's going back to determinations and stuff like that.
Well.
Okay, so, so to move on, can we just put that provision in the item two on the statement of operations that you mentioned that if, if it's decided they want to sell, they would have to be in compliance with the, the code, the current code, the zoning code?
All due respect, Mr. Chairman, I think that I'm hearing that that's not, that would not be the proper process for what Mr. Jensen's asking.
Oh. Why don't we, why don't you, why don't we take this vehicle sales out? So you can get your approval, start moving.
I sell most.
What's that?
Oh.
Salvador, would you?
Yeah, Sal and Angelo Lichardalo here. Can you guys hear me okay?
Sure can, you have the floor.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, we're fine with taking out the, the sales. Like Brennan said, we just didn't want to find a situation where we have a truck that we're kind of phasing out of our, our fleet and that we wanted to, to sell and we didn't want to be stuck where we'd have to transport it to an offsite location just to sell it. But if, you know, that's going to bring us back to the drawing board, then let's just take that out of there.
Take it out early and you can always come back.
Remember.
Special use permit with a little, with a little drawing of the parking lot where you'll store used stuff, you can always get an amendment. That's a lot easier than this process. Take it out temporarily at least is my recommendation.
Yeah, that's fine. Let's do that. Strike that out.
Sounds good.
Okay, the record will show that item. Paragraph two will be revised to remove any reference to the sale of vehicles. Anything else in the? Anything else in the statement of operations? It's got the hours, it's got the number of employees, the lights, when they'll be on, when they'll be off. I think it covers most of what we look for in a special use statement of operations.
Yeah, if I could, I, I think it, I'm, I'm ready to move forward on this, and it's nice to see an Optom project come forward. And my, you know, Brennan and to the applicant, like, thanks for thinking of this area and really condensing our, our development in that area, hopefully it works out, it seems like a really good spot right off of three thirty-two there, you know, so hopefully it works, works for everybody, and I'm, I'm ready to move forward with this.
Is that a motion, Brian?
Yeah, I'm trying, yeah, yeah, but those puppies up, I will, I will make the motion.
I'll pull it out of you.
Make a, why, should we bundle these, Chuck?
There's only one motion regarding the special use, we, we took care of seeker.
Approve the special use permit, CPN twenty-one zero, three, zero, special use permit for Marx Engineering, representing ATL Contractors.
I added eleventh condition regarding the statement of operations being revised as discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Accept that, thank you.
Bob's got a second, Ryan's got a motion, Bob's got a second, any further discussion? And this will go with the property, the special use, so just let it be said, and I know we, we talk about every time we, we handle a special use permit, but the use will go with the property, okay, all in favor?
As long as it doesn't go vacant for over one year, right, Mr. Mr. Euler?
Yeah, that's correct, if it's.
Okay, that's correct, right.
Good catch, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Thanks, fellas, for coming in, thanks, Brennan, well, you're not done yet, so, but I will say goodbye to the folks on Emerson Road. All right. And John, once again, I whisperedly closed the hearing on that.
Yes, I heard that, thank you.
Yes, okay. I didn't want to disturb everybody. All right, new public hearing. I will open a public hearing for Marx Engineering, representing Carol Eifert, owner of property at thirty-five thirty-five State Route three sixty-four, who is seeking a subdivision approval and preliminary site plan approval for the construction of two single-family residences, one hundred and sixteen townhomes, and two thousand feet of new dedicated road. The hearing is now open. And Lance, do you want to preface what we can and can't do tonight in terms of the seeker?
Sure.
Intent to be lead agency?
Correct, so, so tonight, obviously, they're on the agenda for a public hearing and begin dialogue over the proposed application as before you. Ultimately, the only thing that can occur to my report is the application complete and begin the secret coordinated review process. What that means is that this board, if they deemed it complete and began the process, we would package up the materials and forward out to the identified, involved and interested agencies, those agencies that have standing or issue as part of the project that we've identified, beginning that process, it'll be a minimum of thirty days. The coordination period that I've identified so far would extend to I believe it's July first. So that would be the end of the thirty-day window, which would make this project before you, again, at your July thirteenth meeting. And in that meeting, you would be in a position, assuming we received all information input that satisfies yours concerns, be in a position in that meeting to move forward with review of the environmental review of the package, part two, part three, determination of significance, and then potentially move forward with an approval.
Lance, for the benefit of the board and the folks who are sitting in on a meeting, tell us a little bit about what the seeker type one process looks at, looks for in terms of reviews and what it entails?
Sure, so the seeker part one, being that this project of its size, which is, there's certain thresholds that we have to look at, a type-two action per New York State D C guidelines, basically identifies several type of actions that are considered to be type-two. Those are your, what, you know, your placement of utilities in place and kind, small reports, et cetera. Type-one actions are usually your larger projects by definition, it's something that's ten acres of land that rezones over twenty-five acres of land, and if you're in an ag district, those thresholds reduce. If you're in parkland, stay a historic building nearby, there's certain thresholds that would trigger it. This one being that it is disturbance of over ten acres and ultimately it was a rezoning of greater than five acres, I believe, Brennan, was it greater than twenty-five acres, am I correct with that?
Yeah.
So tho- those two mainly are the reasons for triggering a type-one action. But, but ultimately, as part of that type-one action, a full EAF is required to be provided. A full EAF is basically what we call a long form, it's an environmental review, and that form gets completed by the applicant and submitted as part of the application, which then gets reviewed by the staff, by the planning board as part of the review of the project. That EAF part one basically is a summary of the site itself, it, it identifies what is proposed to be done, what potential impacts might be identified on the project, for example, is there stream, is there wetlands, is there steep slope, what are the soil types? Are we in an ag district, those type of elements, they get evaluated and identified in that part one. That part one, the plans and all the application materials, then as part of the coordinated review, go out to all the identified and involved interested agencies. An example of an involved agency in this case would be the town of Hopewell, their neighboring community, they have jurisdiction over some of this project, and therefore, a review by them is required. D C, Army Corps, those type of agencies would also be identified. The Town Board of Town of Kandegwa is also an involved agency due to the rezoning. So this would ultimately get referred to those agencies, and the guidelines suggest that we are allowed thirty-day window of time to provide them ample time to review the information, respond back to whether or not they object to the planning board being lead agency. Lead agency meaning that they're the most appropriate board to make a determination on this action. This being the planning board, the reviewing of the site plans, it makes sense for that, that'd be the first task. The second task associated with their review would be able to provide any potential correspondences related to what permits or approvals they may be seeking, or potential concerns they may have on the application. That gets done in this period of time, and then assuming the board receives that information with no objections, and then reviews from anybody else that the Town of Kandegwa has referred this application to, which was started when the application was received, that information gets reviewed, and then if there's no large impacts identified, then this board would be in a position to potentially neglect it and then move into a review of the preliminary plans. I hope I summarized that as best.
No, in other words, a lot of eyes are going to look at this application. And there'll be a traffic study, there'll be certainly stormwater management reviews and concerns. The sanitary sewers, making sure they are available and functioning, stormwater control in the streets and, and how it affects the lake, the view of the lake from the lake. I mean, these are all issues, I think, those agencies as well as the planning board is going to look at in review of this application. I should go back and say the history of this property, the applicant had come in initially to have the area included in the mixed-use overlay district. There was a discussion looking at a sketch plan submitted by Mr. Marx, and it was based on that sketch plan and a consideration of the surrounding areas, the planning board felt that the type of use proposed is, was applicable, there was no, no warranties or guarantees in terms of the layout of the project, and that was made clear to the applicant. And that review was sent to the town board, and the town board accepted it and has sent it back to us now in the form of a site plan and subdivision application, and that's why we're here tonight. So knowing that we can, just a second, Ryan, knowing that we can only consider tonight the designation of the lead agency, and knowing that there's probably people here who would like to address the board, and it was advertised as a public hearing, I will certainly entertain any comments, concerns regarding the application. And I will start that by having Brennan go over what has changed from the sketch we saw initially. But before we do that, Ryan, you have a question?
No, yeah, Chuck, I, thanks for bringing up the mixed-use overlay. And maybe it would be helpful to kind of have a summary of what the mixed-use overlay is. And, you know, because this was, if I, if, if my memory serves me correct, this is the mix, one of the first mixed-use overlays we, that was designated by the town board several years ago, that gives a little bit of, that encourages in development in that mixed-use overlay, we have three mixed-use overlays in our town, and this is one of them, so maybe Mr. Nadler, just before Mr. Marx gives his presentation, because I know that there's a lot of people that are on this call right now, is, is that accurate for me to summarize that, Mr. Nadler, that the mixed-use overlay makes this a little bit different? Because applications within this area are allowed greater, the base guy, their, their, development is encouraged in these areas, and that's actually by a law that was passed by town board, is that correct, Mr. Nadler?
That's a good point, Mr. State, Chuck. Development is encouraged in this area, I would point out that that is subject to town board approval in addition to a planning board approval. The town board has to approve the type of, the type and amount, I would say, of approval. But yeah, this is an area that the town has long designated as ripe and appropriate as some development. You know, based on the, you know, proceedings to date, I think the, the town and the planning board have indicated a willingness to explore development here. To say that it's going to be exactly this, but where, you know, at this point, this is an exploration of what the town board wants to see in this, in this, that will also work for the developer.
Yeah, if I can extend a little bit, Chris, the M U O basically is, is an area to encourage development, as Chris identified, and it does provide a lot of flexibility to the types of the development that we could see in that area. It does trigger a review by the municipal board, in this case, the town board, prior to this process beginning to vet, to vet out whether or not the type of use, the density that's being proposed, the location, it makes sense, if it does, it begins this process, which then goes through the planning board review of subdivision and site plan, and the environmental, the environmental review ultimately. I did misspeak a little bit earlier, I believe we have to do seeker, and then, maybe I did not, Chris, my thought was is procedurally, it does, we do the environmental review, but then does it go back to the town board prior to this board making a decision on the preliminary approval, or does it stay with us for preliminary review and approval, and then go back to the town board for the M U O?
Are you talking Chris Nadler or Chris Jensen?
There's two Chris's, if one of you know the answer, please let me know.
If you know the answer, Chris Jensen, go ahead, I, I can make my recollection, but if, I think you'll.
So the property is in an M U O, which is just an overlay district, it went to the town board first and got approval to go advance into site plan approval, preliminary site plan approval from the planning board. If they obtain preliminary site plan approval from the planning board, then it goes back to the town board, so they create a new kind of M U O something zoning district, which is a local law, which details everything that this developer put on this plan, number of houses, setbacks and everything. They create this local law, and then it comes back to planning board for final site plan approval.
Thank you.
So the train is pulling out of the station tonight, and this is the first leg in the course of many, many legs yet to come, so, Brennan? Do you want to give us an update as to what's different from this plan?
Yes, great, thank you, guys. So, well, before we, we introduce to you a sketch plan, it was, it was a good-looking picture, we had a few things to address, and now we have a preliminary plan for you, site plan, vision plan for you guys to review. The, the, the intent is still the same, is to develop a, a number of town home buildings, and then also two residential buildings at the, near the top of the site, which is on the east side of the site. The development also continues on into the Town of Hopewell with nine residential, single-family residential lots. The, currently, it's thirty-three point two acres, its zone is R one twenty with that mixed-use overlay that you guys were just discussing. Currently, it's vacant, land covers mostly brush trees. It's maybe an old farmland, there might, might have been an old barn structure that's been removed, and near the three sixty-four. The, the proposal is to, to adopt the M U O, which allows us to develop this property for the intended use. There'll be a new dedicated road that, that comes off of Route three sixty-four, it will continue up the hill and connect to County Road eighteen. As you're going up the hill, as you come off three sixty-four, there'll be town home buildings, north and south side of the street, the dedicated, new dedicated road, those town home buildings will be four units each. They will be a mixture of two bedrooms and three-bedroom units, so it'll be two, two bedrooms, two, three bedrooms. They'll have its own garage, driveway off of a private driveway, which is connects to the dedicated road. The private driveway, we either have a hammerhead turn around at the end for fire apparatus access, or it will have a loop that connects it to the next town homes up the hill. On the north side of dedicated road will be a new stormwater pond to capture and retain the stormwater to reduce the peak flows off the site. In addition to the stormwater pond, we're planning stormwater treatment at, or at the front or the back of the proposed town home structure. Basically, it'll sheet flow off of the driveways and the private driveways into a grass dry swell, which will be an infiltration practice, a green practice. And after that goes to the grass dry swell, it'll be collected on the new dedicated road and transferred down to the stormwater pond with storm sewers, sketch spaces, manholes, et cetera. Yep, that's how, oh, well, I, sorry. Chris, the, I'm jumping around a little bit, so there's one hundred and ten town home, one hundred and sixteen town home units on twenty-nine buildings. The, each building, each unit will have three parking spaces each, the some of the parking spaces will be located in, in the garage, in front of the garage, and also remotely, some of which are parallel parking on the private drive, or there's a dedicated parking area next to the stormwater management pond, which will also have a Kia, a mail kiosk there. The, I'll talk about the road a little bit, the dedicated road will be a complete street with sidewalk on the south side, it'll be curb gutter, or country gutters or gutters on either side, north and south. And there will be full utilities, sewer, water, electric gas that will go up the new dedicated road. The water system, water services will loop around the private roads and connect back for, for continuous service. The, there is a steep slope section near the middle of the site that is up to eighteen percent grades, we are avoiding that with development. We do get close to it as the county board has recognized. Hang on one second here, I gotta plug in my laptop. The, here we go. All right. Going up the hill, there's two residential lots at the top, but you can see like that C one oh five square, that's what we're calling estate lots, those will be the relatives of the developers that's planning to own and occupy those. They will have a view of the lake, also, the majority of the buildings there in the C O one oh four square will have a view of the lake. They, they will be walkouts at the C one oh four section there, walkout basements. And I guess, again, as you continue up the hill into Hopewell, there'll be just single-family residential lots, one-acre lots for sale. Landscaping throughout, we have a landscaping plan, lighting. Lighting, uh, on the, uh, on the private drive entrances to the dedicated road. Um, the biggest Zivo, um, at the right there, that big octagon, um, to for amenities for the, uh, the residents to use, which will also should have a view of the lake. So again, I'm just going to circle back through with what the town comprehensive plan and the mixed use overlay kind of outlines for this area. It is a a node that's designated for development. In the town of Candagwa, it is the gateway from the, the, the southeast side that comes from Gorm along the east side of the lake. Um, you know, this has been identified for development. And this is a good development for it. We're offering three and a half units per acre, um, which is less than a lot of multi-residential developments, which are up around eight units per acre. The reason why is we want to space these out a little bit to get the views of the lake and also, you know, keep that that, uh, less dense atmosphere for the development. And also going back to the town code is, or the town comprehensive plan is the comprehensive plan is to for the town is is to create a diverse, um, housing, not just single family residents, but also housing that that elder people that could use, uh, empty nesters, you know, people that are downsizing, and then also young professionals that that may or not be uh, working at the college or the hospital, uh, which parents are may or may have be able to afford or may not be able to afford a new house so they could look in for an inner place to live. And then also, you know, the comprehensive plan is bottom line is is they want to add thirteen hundred housing units to the town, um, in the plan. So this is a note designated for development. Uh, we're we're offering a development here that's that could be more dense, but we're we're we're, uh, keeping the atmosphere and the density at a minimal or at a reasonable rate and connecting two major roads in the in the town. And, uh, the owners, actually, the developers, uh, Salvador, you heard from a second ago, is also on the on the line here. So if he has anything else he wants to add to it, feel free.
I you did a great job, Brennan. I don't have anything else to add right now.
Well, we'll be here to answer questions if anyone has any.
Okay, um, let's, uh, any questions from the board? Uh, you know, realizing what our limitations are this evening, I mean, any, any guidance or concerns that you may have as board members pass them along to the applicant at this time for consideration, but I guess we really won't get into a full-fledged review until, uh, that July eighth meeting. But anybody from the board like to make any comments regarding the, uh, overall application?
Yes, Bob, I do.
All right, go ahead, Bob. You can go first.
Thanks, Gary. Uh, Brennan, Salvador, guys, uh, these are just my comments that I saw when I looked at it, and it's very hard to look at this on a computer screen, so you probably have it there, but I didn't see it. Uh, I didn't notice any sidewalks inside the town home area, just the one side. And then that one sidewalk, um, I had concerned, it didn't show a sidewalk connection to the kiosk, which is across the street. There wasn't any crosswalks there. Uh, and I didn't see any fire hydrants on the plans at all. And I think I just saw them just now, but trash pickup areas, or you can, are you doing dumpsters? Or how is that going to be handled? And that's basically my comments, the sidewalks, crosswalks, fire hydrants, trash pickups.
Yeah, Gary, good, good points. Uh, definitely would connect that over to the kiosks of the sidewalk and and I'll also bring it down to three sixty four, even though there's no six sidewalk on three sixty four. You know, the, uh, the necessity for sidewalks along the front of the town homes. Um, maybe minimal. I mean, there would be low traffic areas. People would tend to walk on the, the, in the driveway. Um, and I I can definitely let Salvador uh, talk that a little bit more, talked about that a little bit more, because this is not their first hot development for sure. And then, um, hydrants, yeah, there's going to be fire hydrants, so.
I only mentioned, uh, the sidewalks because my daughter with her kids, she's always walking on sidewalks and doesn't like walking in the streets, so.
There, there definitely, there's also, um, a trail system that's going to be provided throughout, um, that there that's available for like walking your dog or whatnot. And I think you can see that on the, uh, on the the first layout sheet, the C one hundred, C one oh one.
I'd like to jump on what Bob just said, because that was one of my major, uh, or one of my comments too, was the sidewalks. I I would like to actually see a sidewalk on both the north and the south side of the road. Um, for people to ax, particularly to access that mailbox. You've got the mail drop on the north side, but anybody on those, any in those of those north buildings, um, doesn't have access. They'd have to either cross the road, take the sidewalk down, and then cross the road again to get over to the mailboxes. It just does not make sense. I think if you're going to do that, you're going to have mail, mail drop places. I think you need to have sidewalks on both sides of the road. And then and then appropriate crosswalks to be able to get across. So that's, that was my one big comment there. Um, you mentioned landscaping plan, but I didn't see one. Maybe I overlooked it or something, but I never saw a landscaping plan. So that's something that I think, uh, when we look at next time, we're going to have to make sure we have. Um, and then my other comment is you've, and this might just be an error in, uh, on on the plan or in your wording or something, but everybody's been talking about this, this borders the town of Hopewell. The plans say it's the town of Gorham that it, uh, borders the the others in Gorham. So I don't know if it's Gorham or Hopewell, but either the words are wrong or the plans are wrong, I don't know which it is.
Yeah, borders both. South to the south is Gorham and to the to the east is Hopewell. We're in the very corner of the town.
Okay.
And, um,
Yeah, all right.
You will have a set of landscaping plans to review.
Yep.
But as far as the road extension, that's into Hopewell, right, Brennan?
Yes.
Where do you stand with Hopewell on the, on your application regarding the, uh, extension of the street and the subdivision?
Uh, submitted into for preliminary subdivision and site plan review, same as the same, same situation as we are here.
Okay. Uh, mentioning the, the, uh, the street or the driveway in front of the town homes, you had said it's either going to be a, uh, a sub street, or it's going to be looped into the, uh, adjacent street. I think the new plan showed being looped.
For the most part, there's that one set there, buildings, one through four. Hammerhead.
Okay. So I guess all the more potential for traffic, uh, because you could have potential traffic from both both streets or both furnaces of of two groups of townhouses rather than just one. Uh, but I like the concept of looping it. Um, now, these homes, are they going to be, uh, fee simple in terms of, uh, they're going to be owned, they're not rented, right, these units?
Um, they're going to be, they're going to be rented with the option to be, uh, homes for sale.
Okay, and and what would the homeowner be buying just within the four walls or any land outside?
The intent is does not to sell them right off the bat. Um, but if if they were to be sold, it would be everything included in the home to the party wall, which divides the units.
Okay, so either an apartment management will take care of the, uh, the open space and, uh, or a condo association potentially in the future?
Right. And Sal, you can, you can jump in on that if you want.
Yeah, the the plan is to just rent them. Um, and then, you know, we would take care of all the common area maintenance. Um, but but, you know, it's, we want to leave open the possibility down the road to sell them, uh, but it's not the plan right now.
I have a question on that. I've seen in some other, another municipality, something very similar and I just, I guess, I don't necessarily need to know the answer today because it sounds like renting. That would be totally, but the plan as laid out makes sense for that. But if they become ownership, then aren't they then by default lots, and which means each one of the units would be a lot? And in order to be a lot, doesn't it have, now is that where the M U O, Chris, would would have to be identified as part of the M U O that's, we're allowing these lots at that size to be approved? Um, even though they're not applying it with town law in the, in the zoning district?
Yeah, so if they were gonna come, if they were gonna sell off lots, um, they would need subdivision approval. Uh, which would could theoretically go back through the M U O process essentially to allow for that. Um, right now, they've got individual lots to be approved by the town board um, in terms of, uh, dimensions, area requirements and density. Um, more importantly, they would need to do a, as part of the subdivision, a homeowner's association.
Right, so we would.
That's that would take place down the road and you know, as the, as developers, you know, they would think long and hard before doing that because that would be a lengthy, burdensome process to undergo. And we would figure out that process and and they may or may not get the M U O amended approval to to even do that in terms of lot size.
Right, so, so basically the question is, is if we're at this moment in time, as we process this, we're going to look at this as as one, one large lot with a common area owned and maintained by the applicants. And then in the future, if they wanted to subdivide it, there's a procedure for that, they would come before us and go through that procedure.
Exactly. And thank you to the developers for, you know, being upfront about it, you know, you might sell them at some point, but that's not your plan now. If your plan to start selling them, let us know now, because.
No, it's not. We'd much rather rent them, uh, but you know, as the market dictates it, if we had to, um, you know, then we would come back to the board and it would be a new process.
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay, that we have a group of people, I'm sure that have been patiently waiting.
Just one more, one more comment or question. Um, I know i- in larger roads, we've, we've, we've talked about where driveways or entrances to facilities enter a common road that they kind of be across from each other and not staggered. And I'm one with these looped roads. Um, I I don't know what they're called, looped, the driveways, roads, I'm not sure what they, those are called. But as they come on to the dedicated road, do we need to try to to see if those those north, south entrances to that dedicated road are um, I guess perpendicular to each other and and align, align with each other and.
Or not, not, yeah, not offset like they are.
Yeah, do we need to be concerned about that?
That is certainly a good practice. Uh, I I saw that myself.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's, if there's potential to shift some buildings around, the line those driveways up or put some bends in the driveways to have them line up.
Yeah.
We will look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, uh, go to the audience. Uh, please raise your hand. Give us your name, address, ask your question to the board. And either the board will answer or we'll ask the applicant to answer. Anyone wish to speak or you just here to hear what's happening?
We have a John Frank.
Okay, John, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, I live at thirty five sixty Otis Shiana Point, uh, directly across the street from the proposed entrance to the new development. I have a number of questions and concerns. Um, when Lance, uh, gave his initial comments, he mentioned that Hopewell and or Gorham uh, would need to review, he used the word review the plan. I'm not sure what that word review means. Uh, do, does in fact their board, similar to Canada was, ha- hold a vote? Can they say, no, we don't want this? Or what, what jurisdiction, what control? Uh, what is their procedure? I'm I'm not at all familiar with it. And how would it, and how would it affect what we're doing here?
Mr. Chairman, if I could interject, and and Mr. Frank, this isn't a personal, uh, this isn't personalized to you, but this is not a question and answer period. This is for, uh, public comment. Um, that being said, I don't, I don't know the, the town of Hopewell or the town of Gorham.
Chris, in, in Mr. Frank's defense, I did say, anybody have any questions? Uh, I'm not sure if anybody can answer. Answer if they can find, let's give Mr. Frank an answer. Uh, and I certainly know that Hopewell would be involved because the the road is going to extend through their, uh, into their jurisdiction and eventually out the county route eighteen.
Sure.
And ea- how each community, uh, addresses or responds to a request for a seeker input. Uh, I guess that's up to the determination of each, each town as to how they do that, either through staff or through a formal, uh, uh, meeting. Um, but I I think what we're soliciting are comments. Uh, not, and and the comments are based on a review. So I think when when Lance said that it was to be reviewed, to be be reviewed, and if need be, provide comments to, uh, to us as the lead agency. Is that, is that correct, folks?
Yeah, so just extending that general municipal law requires any municipality within five hundred feet of an application to be referred to. So this application, being that it borders the town of Gorham and the town of Hopewell, just by by that location alone, requires it to be referred to their municipal boards for a review. Now, that review provides feedback to this board for their review as part of this approval process. I said review a lot, but what that means is they're just going to provide feedback to the town of Canada, the planning board and in terms of what concerns maybe they see, um, location, density, those type of things. Now, seeker is a process that requires us to coordinate out for those communities and those agencies that require an approval. The town of Hopewell does have an approval of a portion of this project. That's the roadway. And I believe the water main, I could be wrong, I have to look at the plans again, but no water main connection, okay? But the roadway connection ultimately, and the portion of the project that extends into the Hopewell side would be required to receive an approval from Hopewell. Now, that's a separate application. They're going through that separately, but Hopewell would provide feedback to the town of Canada. And then as part of the Hopewell review, the town of Canada is going to provide feedback back to Hopewell. So there's two applications being reviewed simultaneously from Canada, one with Hopewell for for portions of the project that's been described tonight. I hope I answer that somewhat.
Is that helpful, Mr. Frank? You, you're muted, Mr. Frank. Mr. Frank, you're muted.
Now you can talk.
Hello?
Still have, still have the floor, Mr. Frank. All the benefits of Zoom.
Frank, you're, 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 Frank, you're muted. There you go.
Okay, you go. Anything else, Mr. Frank?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I I misunderstood, apparently I misunderstood uh, the purpose of the meeting and of the type of question we can ask. So I I have a number of other concerns and I'll try to limit those, uh, to expressing a concern and not ask a direct question, okay? Um, another concern I have is the amount of green space. Uh, I believe there's rules and regulations and requirements uh, as to the amount of green space required, uh, for a development like this. And, uh, I'm concerned, uh, looking at these diagrams, uh, that there's very little green space left over uh, after the, after the development. Um, another concern is, uh, the number of cars. We're talking about a hundred and sixteen units, uh, assuming that each unit has two cars. That's over two hundred and fifty cars. Uh, they're going to be going up and down, potentially going up and down that road, north and south, uh, more likely south out of, out on the East Lake Road, uh, directly opposite my driveway. Um, another concern is that word rent. Uh, does this mean that if, uh, my son comes into Color- from Colorado and wants to rent a place for two weeks to be on the lake, the vacation, that he can rent one of these places for two weeks? And have a bunch of his. And have a bunch of his college friends over there partying it up for two weeks? That's a real concern for me. Uh, uh, owning, owning and purchasing is one thing. Renting is something entirely different and puts a whole new, uh, perspective, uh, on. Uh, this, this, uh, this proposal. Um, the rainwater is a concern. Uh, according to the map, we have the pond. Which is supposed to collect the rainwater. As it comes down from the, uh, east end off the hill. Uh, however, that pond is, uh, two, uh, sections of development, um, east, I'm sorry. Uh, east of, uh, the East Lake Road. And I'm wondering where the rain is going to go. And how the developer is going to handle the rain runoff, uh, from those two sections, uh, of development. Assuming that the pond handles, uh, the rest of it. Uh, we all know that, uh, County Road eighteen completely was destroyed. Only a few years ago when there was a severe rain year, so much so that the right road was closed. Uh, for almost a year while it had to be totally rebuilt. Uh, my concern is that the volume of water running down that straight road. Uh, could pause, pose a real problem, uh, to the residents of Otisiana Point. As, as did occur when the rain came across the East Lake Road and flooded, uh, the yards of the cottage and homeowners. Uh, on Poplar Beach when Route eighteen, uh, was destroyed. Another concern is the dedicated road, uh, in terms of who's paying for it. Uh, I think there needs to be some oversight, uh, as to how that, how that's done. Um, and along with, uh, traffic. The question is, or I should say, my comment is, um. How is traffic going to be handled as vehicles enter Route three sixty-four? Is there a stop sign? Is there a signal light? How are we going to deal with all of these cars coming down from this development? At six, seven, eight o'clock in the morning, people going to work, combined with all the people who are already, uh, on the East Lake Road. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Frank. Your concerns are duly noted. Uh, I know the. The applicant has taken notes as to what you were concerned. I know I did.
If I could, I could comment on a few with, uh, Mr. Frank's concerns if we have time.
Um, sure. So.
All right. Real quick, um, they're not going to be short-term rentals, uh, minimum one-year lease. Um, and they're also going to be, uh, upscale. I, I think probably going to run around, uh, eighteen hundred, two thousand dollars a month. So. Um, you know, as far as attracting college kids and all of that, I think, uh, it's probably unlikely. Um. Right. Yeah. The majority are people who have like a condo down in Florida and they want a rental that they don't have to worry about mowing the grass and they come back and forth. Um, seems to be the majority. The, uh, traffic concerns, uh, we're in contact right now with D O T, uh, you know, three sixty-four is a state route. So. Ultimately, we need their approval for, uh, how we plan on handling.
You're not muted right now.
Mr. Kuen, you'll have to mute yourself or? Thank you. Sorry, sorry, Sal.
No, that's, that's okay. Um, and then I know with the green space too, um, I know it's kind of hard to see here, but like Brennan said. Under the, uh, what the code requires for, for the green space and, you know, we will be adding a, a lot of landscaping as well. Um, and then we will be paying for the road. I know that was another one of your concerns. Uh, we'll be paying for the entire cost and then dedicating that to the town. Um, and then as far as cars entering and exiting, um, we will do whatever D O T requires. Uh, they're going to look at the traffic study and, you know, trip generation and distribution and, uh. You know, basically whatever they tell us to put in, whatever they think is sufficient is what we're going to do. Um, and we're hopeful that it will have a minimal impact on your, uh, neighborhood right across the street there. Um, and then Brennan would probably be able to handle the stormwater questions better than I can. Um, I don't have much knowledge of that.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, in terms of, uh, stormwater goes, uh, we're, we're looking at a significant grade increase from where the, the pond is at around seven oh one and the East Lake Road is. Around seven nineteen. So there's a nineteen foot elevation increase from the pond elevation to the East Lake Road. So. Um, flooding of that would be significant to the cert- to the degree of nineteen foot surge, which is probably unlikely. Um, and we will be required to meet this next New York State D E C guidelines for runoff reduction and, and treatment. So the, uh, post-conduction, post-construction conditions will have to be reduced. The flows will need to be reduced. To less than pre-construction, which is existing flows off the site now. So there's going to be an improvement for drainage. Including drainage that contributes to Poplar Beach.
Okay. Moving on to, uh, anyone else, uh, Mr. Kuen, I know you were. Ready, willing and able there. Do you like to address the board?
Hang on just a second. I'm not that good with this machine. Um, uh, my name is Bob Kuen and I'm one of the managing partners at, uh, three, six, two, seven, East Lake LLC. We're the adjoining property on the south side in the town of Gorham. Uh, first of all, I would like to talk about the water runoff. There, the area approximately three hundred fifty to four hundred feet east of Route three sixty-four than the site plan here. Uh, I wouldn't be surprised if that could be designated a wetland area, uh, even today there, you know, your ankle deep in water there for a good. Quarter acre or more and, um, more than half of our property going all the way over to our south boundary. It ends up draining into that area and we are here to vehemently object to any change in our apparent rights. To have no change in gradient, no change in flow rate, no change in, uh, path management and all that kind of stuff. Because we are, we have designated ourselves actually a forever green space. And we don't want anything disturbed. My sister and my brother and I inherited this property from our parents. Uh, actually we go back to that area. Over sixty-three years now that we've been there. Um. Like I say, we, we vehemently will enforce our repairing rights. The density of this project, I mean, just commenting now as, as a concerned citizen. I would like to amplify Mr. Frank's concerns. The, the traffic is going to be horrendous. It is every morning already on East Lake Road. Especially the fact that it's not a, you know, it's a forty-five mile an hour speed limit. And the last thing I want to see is more traffic lights and a lower speed limit because we're there and we aren't particularly interested in inviting other people to come share what we have. The. Uh, well, back on, on the water thing, the, there's a gully on the south side of our property that ends up going, uh, subterranean, actually through a gravel bank to the best of our estimation. And it reemerges in an area probably three, four hundred feet, uh. From where it goes in there, even now, and you know, you can't take a tractor up or even a four-wheel drive tractor even today would get stuck up in there. And again, we want to see no change in any of that because it's my hunting camp, to be perfectly honest with you. The traffic, again, let me amplify Mr. Frank's concerns. I said that. Uh, my sister is here with me, Sister Charlotte. She's one of the managing members of the LLC also. And Kenny.
Let's echo my brother Bob's feelings about this proposed development. I would be particularly strongly concerned about all of the water management details that. I understand from your prior comments, you will be addressing through environmental studies and so forth. I think that the potential impact on drainage and water management. Of these lands is immense with the considerable density that's being proposed here. No offense to the potential developers here, but this is an incredibly large project. That has, has enormous wetland and, uh, drainage implications. As well as storm runoff implications that the other speaker already mentioned. So we would like to see. A very comprehensive study related to something like this.
Furthermore, we don't want to change. We don't want to increase our drainage. We like it the way it is. We like it as a wildlife area. And this is our, our intent to use it that way and forever actually. Uh, if that, if it lasts that long, um. I think I'm done.
Okay. Thank you for your comments and we certainly. Will take our advisement, uh, what's been requested. Uh, let's move on. Anyone else? Uh, Chris, are you seeing anyone?
Yeah, Jim and Mary Marigold, uh, I'm going to lower your hand if you can unmute yourself.
Hi folks. Do you want to tell us your name and address?
You have to unmute yourself. We can't hear you. Okay, moving on to Bob and Sue Taylor. Please unmute yourself.
Okay, I think we're unmuted. Can you hear us?
Sure can.
Okay, uh, yeah, we live this Bob and Sue Taylor thirty-five sixty-four Otisiana Point. Uh, again, we're neighbors with John Frank, uh, next door neighbors to the south. So we share the same in, same cottage road that will. Uh, essentially be directly across from the exit from this proposed development. Uh, so I think the key points have been stated. We're very concerned about runoff control. We're very concerned about traffic control. Uh, three sixty-four during peak hours is already a difficult, uh, turn for us, especially when we turn left. There's a rise coming up, uh, the hill from the north and it's very difficult to see traffic coming. You have a very short window. And so that needs to be, uh, you know, looked at and understood. Uh, the other issue that, that traffic, uh, will have to deal with is. When you're coming from, from the north, driving south and someone attempts to turn left, this happens frequently into the, uh. Into the mobile home park, uh, just to the north of this project. Uh, cars cannot pass. They, they may be able to pass if they go onto the shoulder. Uh, or they may not. It depends on the, the turning cars, uh, direction and, and it seems to me you would, you would need a left turn lane. Uh, into this project to be able to have, uh, you know, you, proper traffic control. So. Uh, so I just reiterate, uh, a, a proper traffic study to understand the load and how. Uh, cars coming out of the development and coming out of our development are going to access three sixty-four will be an important question for us. The other comment that's been raised is that it's a concept of rental and, uh, uh, we, you know, echo the same concerns that, uh. You know, it, it really gets down to the quality of the tenant and the quality of the landlord as to what kind of a property emerges from a rented. Uh, facility. So there's a, there's risk there that I'm sure all of our neighbors will be concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Uh, thank you for attending and thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Chairman Euler?
Uh, well, I see Mr.
Robin Evans.
Okay, Robin, I will call on you. Thank you for getting my attention.
Thank you. Um, I know that you've received some concerns, uh, from the environmental conservation board and I would like to echo some of those concerns. As well. Uh, I'd also like to point out that I'm concerned about the erosion control during construction. With the road on that hill going vertical. Uh, I don't know if you remember, but back in the nineties, when the landing subdivision was, uh, put in. There was a mudslide. It was a very heavy rainstorm and they had a vertical road like that. And there was a mudslide that went right across West Lake Road and right into the lake. So I do have a lot of concerns about a vertical road. And I wondered about having it reconfigured. So it was more like the landings road, which is more of S shape so that there is a break. Uh, in the area. The other thing is the, um, retention pond after construction. Um, I guess, I don't know if it's been engineered. It looks kind of small for the amount of. Water that it might be carrying and also with the vertical road, obviously the drains will pick up some of that runoff. But I don't know how much of it would just go straight down the road and across three sixty-four. So I don't know if there's going to be some kind of a catch basin at the road. Um, but I would a- ask the developers to look into that as well. Um, the other thing is they're talking about, I think I saw a number of thirty-nine percent open space. Um, I believe the town code is it has to be forty percent or greater and it should be meaningful open space. Uh, that is preserved. And he also mentioned something about dedicating it to the town. I'm not sure the town would want to own that. I think it should continue to be, um, owned and maintained by the developers. And just let's compare that to what Morrell has recently come to the town with, uh, several weeks ago. When they said that they're putting seventy-four percent of the parcel in open space. And here we're talking less than forty percent. So that would be a concern as well. And, uh, let's see, the other thing I would like the town to consider. Is this project will be in the view shed of the lake and the area on, uh, west of the lake. So I would like to see some. Kind of plan that these homes could be screened from view. And they should fall below the ridge line and the color should be, uh, blending in with the environment so that it's not. Uh, something very ugly to look at. And, um, lastly, I'm not sure how many trees will have to be removed and versus how many will be replaced following construction. But I think a landscaping plan is something that is important, uh, for the public to see as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin. All three good concerns. I did see one other hand up. Uh, Mark Talbert has his hand up. Uh. How about we recognize you, Mr. Tal?
Good evening and thanks for the floor. Um, Mark Talbert, three, five, nine, six, Otisiana Point, uh, just south of the project. And echoing many of the concerns that folks have mentioned already. Also recognizing that we have a responsibility to be both stewards to the lake and to the town. So bringing up comments again related to the residential lake district aspect of where we are today. I do, uh, I am very familiar with the Morrell project and I think that's a great example of what can be done from an economic standpoint, both reducing. The overall footprint as well as leaving green space in place and still having a business case that makes sense. Uh, additionally, I would just like to highlight that the rents that were mentioned in the eighteen hundred to two thousand per month. I would not consider that a, uh, a high rent district for Canada any longer. I think that those days have gone and you'll even see the college dollars that. We'll go into that. So a three-bedroom college apartment at a few hundred dollars per student would not be something that would be unusual. For me, many of the things are related to the paramount concerns related to safety. There are massive concerns and having spent some more than two decades in the fire service evaluating programs like this. The roadway connecting eighteen to three sixty-four creates large environmental and safety concern for the grade that's in place. I would ask that we consider the need to even connect that road at all, potentially turning those into cul-de-sacs at both ends. If the project does move forward, that would reduce the speeds that would happen there. It would reduce the runoff that could happen there. It would actually make in some cases emergency access easier. Uh, if it continues to be straight, I would suggest having medians in place, which also has shown to slow down traffic. Because with such a large elevation as you approach three sixty-four. Living here, I can tell you that three sixty-four is, is dangerous at the set speeds that we have today. So even for the tenants that would be here, I would look at it as a large concern for them. So as you're creating. Uh, venues for them to work at the top of the hill and enjoy the top of the hill. Uh, encouraging them to have those walkways in place would be a strong recommendation. Trying to cross over three sixty-four. To walk the dog or what have you is something that, uh, I would take concern with for their safety as well. Uh, I would have wetland concerns there as well. The, the lower portion of that property has demonstrated that it is a wet region, but it also carries. Uh, some interesting wildlife that I would ask that we take a look for in that regime. And just the general displacement of wildlife that happens there too. And just the general displacement of wildlife that happens there, too. So again, safety, and then tying that to the what I would ask that we'd consider the requirements related to the residential lake district would should be some of the things that we closely consider. And thank you for the floor.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Someone else like to speak? These are all very good comments, by the way, and I certainly appreciate you're spending the evening with us and bringing these to our attention. I do have a from the Zoom chat from Mary and Jim Marigold, 3520 East Lake Road. We are also concerned with storm runoff and the four brooks that empty into the lake at our north property line. We have experienced flooding before and fear that revamping these brooks would increase flooding potential. We are also concerned about downspout runoff. Okay, so that's from Mary and Jim Marigold, 3520 East Lake Road. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board? Okay, well, certainly a lot of the items that you brought up to senior are concerns that I've been looking at. I know the board's been looking at in terms of the reviews, the the traffic issues on this, the speed issue on this road was was it was talked about back in the sketch plan stage. Certainly, the view from the lake and to the lake is something that is of great concern to the board and will be looked at in in detail as we continue through the review. But all that being said, I think, again, at this point, I think we're Lance, is there a former formal motion we have to take to designate ourselves as lead agency?
Yes, so I prepared a draft resolution for your consideration, and ultimately, yes, there has to be a motion in a second to allow that process to begin.
Okay, well, hearing nothing else from the board or the residents, I'm going to close the hearing for the time being. We will continue it at the earliest on July. Excuse me, July 13th was the date, I believe, right? Once we have the input back on the secret reviews.
Yeah.
So if someone would make a motion to have the town planning board be the lead agency on the secret review, I would so entertain that.
I'll make that motion that the I'd like to make that motion that the town planning board become lead agency for this project.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second, okay, I got a second from Ryan. I got a motion and a second. This will be kicking off the whole process, folks. So with that being said, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we are the lead agency in the secret secret review, and that will proceed in subsequent meetings. And again, I thank all the folks who tuned in tonight, and thank you for your comments, and we we I think we all took notes. The applicant heard you heard your concerns, the planning board heard your concerns, staff heard your concerns, so they will all be considered as part of the review. All right. Let's move on to I don't think there's any more plans to review. Let's go to the approval minutes from the May 11th meeting. I think there was a second draft. Someone may want to make a motion.
Minutes from the last planning board meeting.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Gary. No further discussion. Nice job, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have no referrals from town board, no recommendations to give to the ZBA. No recommendations to pass on to our code enforcement officer. There's no money to be spent tonight in terms of releases. We do have one item. Our June 22nd meeting is primary election day. Town Hall will be occupied. So in the past, when we used to meet at Town Hall, back many years ago, we would put we would reschedule the meeting to the following day. In this case, since we're still in a Zoom environment, how about we just leave it at the 22nd and assume we'll be zooming again, and that way we will not be involved in the conflicts with the the election. Is that okay?
I don't think Ryan wants to zoom anymore. Is there any update on that, Chuck? Or Chris Jensen or Nadler?
I I yield to our attorney. Chris Nadler, you didn't run away.
No, I'm sorry, I was unmuting myself. I have no specific information. But my understanding is that we will be able to do some sort of a hybrid meeting at some point in the near future.
Because the town board is meeting in person.
In hybrid, a hybrid method, yeah.
I believe the executive order does expire sometime around June 16th or so.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
So that that means the possibility that we could meet at the Town Hall on the 22nd.
I don't think I think they use it for it's a it's a polling place.
Well, I mean, I know, I mean, if if the absent the polling, I mean, with the executive, yeah, excuse me, executive order potentially expiring on the 16th, it opens it up for that week, whether it's the 22nd, 23rd, for us to at least maybe be a hybrid.
Well, and I would I would I would say we for June, we we continue to meet for Zoom, we Zoom it. But looking at July and going what we, you know, having what we just went through with so many people having interest in this application we were discussing over on 364, it's a much better environment to have people in person, as we're finding out. So maybe hopefully, fingers crossed, say our prayers that we could meet on that. That would be our first meeting in July, and we could have that at the very least hybrid. And I guess the concern is that you don't know how many people are going to show up, and you know, is there a spacing requirement in terms of social distancing and and all those good things? And do you have to have people check their vaccine records at the door? Or how do we? How do we do that? But that all has to be determined, but we have another month to do that.
Yeah.
Shauna, why don't you, Lance, and I get together? Why don't you reach out to Lance and I? And we can figure out what what we can do to accommodate the board. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Okay, if you can reach out to Lance and I later this week, probably next week, we can set that up.
Yeah, we'll figure it all out. Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Right, Ryan can attend. He's vaccinated.
Yeah, I mean, there it's a there's we got us. We got to start moving to more normal here. But they got these vaccine passes that are
Yeah, epic.
You know, like if we can, if we can somehow maybe institutionalize the hybrid system, I think that I think we should move forward with our with our, an idea would be to move forward with our rules of procedure and and incorporate this ability to incorporate Zoom. I think it will be good for a lot of the public to be able to zoom in from their homes and continue to have that hybrid. But I'm just so I want to see John Warburton so bad, buddy. I miss you, man. I miss you guys. Like, we haven't seen each other in over a year, and I think that there's something lost with dialogue with the public and with applicants and among ourselves when we're there, and my kids are running around, chickens are running around, and you know, there's just something lost. I really want to get back to that.
Certainly agree. It's it certainly served a purpose for the time that we needed to do it, but it's time to get back to somewhat normal.
Well, speaking of the just just for the record, and so you know, for the June 22nd meeting, I'm going to request to be excused. I'm going to be out of town that week and unavailable, so.
Okay.
Request denied.
Gary, you can zoom in from wherever.
Probably will not be able to do that.
Okay, we'll give you the night.
So, you know, I won't be there on the 22nd.
Thanks for letting us know in advance. Appreciate it. Okay. So we will Zoom on the 22nd. We don't have to move the meeting. I will let Michelle know that. Looking at our training sessions, we've got those clean energy sessions that are ongoing with the Genesee Valley Finger Lakes Planning Authority or whatever it is. They're they certainly seem like good sessions, so do them if you can. Get your training in as you go. That all that behind us, then looking at June 8th, our meeting isn't too bad. I think we have at least two applications, one being the Gill application. We just pushed ahead because of the snafu with the ZBA. And then Aurora Aurora Solar comes back on the 22nd. And I guess that is just after the expiration of the lead agency timeline, right, Lance? For Aurora?
Correct. I think time fries. Timeline, yes. You'd be seeing it essentially the very next day after the 30 days is up.
Okay.
Which for the just for the board's review that that information was forwarded out to all the involved interested agencies beginning that process.
Okay. All right, anybody have anything else for the good of the group?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry to to keep it going so long, but it's really, really important for our community. I'm sorry, Lance. The comprehensive plan update. So I am the representative from the planning board on the comprehensive plan. And, you know, it seems like it's been forever. So just for Amanda's purpose, and maybe Shauna and other people in the public, so the comprehensive plan, we began planning for that, it seems like almost a year and a half, maybe almost two years ago.
Pre-COVID.
Yeah, pre-pre-COVID. Eric Cooper was was leading that project up. We did not hire an external agency. Met for a while. I was chairing that a lot of those meetings with Eric. Gary showed up. So a lot of charrettes, a lot of meetings, a lot of good, good things happening. Then all of a sudden, the COVID hit, and it put the brakes on basically everything. But I think that there was a lot of drafting of the plan going on behind the scenes. We saw some things. So I hadn't seen much of that plan since maybe September, October. And then I just received an email last week from Sarah Reynolds. The and the comments are were requested to be back to Sarah by June 4th. And I'm struggling with that personally, because as chairperson, I want to make sure that we reach out to the comprehensive plan team that puts so much time and effort into this in the past. And so I wanted to get your feedback on maybe I might reach out to Sarah and and maybe delay this June 4th deadline because I don't want to rush the process, given that we have been going through so much already. And so is that clear? So she sent out a basically a draft final that wanted comments by June 4th so that we could send it to the town board to set a public hearing. So once that happens, things move pretty quick, and I'm just hesitant because I don't want to rush the process. Does anybody have any comments about that?
Ryan, this is Shauna. I do. I have a comment or two about that because I also just received that same email and document from Sarah. And I would, I I would love extra time to review it and comment and sit down with the committee to get a better feel for everything, really. It's such an important document that I I'm I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, Shauna, very, very much for that input. Anybody else?
I I know in the process that it has sections of the comprehensive plan have been distributed to project teams and committees for their review. Their input has been put back into whatever draft they're on right now. They're probably on draft three or four. And I think they're going to pass it on. That's why the June 4th deadline was there. They're going to pass it on to the ordinance committee for its blessing. And once it hits the ordinance committee, then it goes to town board for scheduling a public hearing. So that's like takes a month to do. And then when the public hearing is scheduled, all the reviewing boards and committees will look at it as required under the SOP. And that would come then to the planning board for our review. So again, Ryan, if you if you want to have your committee, if you're not, if you're concerned that they haven't had enough time to look at it, I'm sure Michelle's willing to, or excuse me, Sarah's willing to give you an extension as well as Shauna to to have a last look.
Yeah, thanks, Chuck. I mean, I guess I guess part of part of my heart, my soul, is making sure that the boards and committees don't trump the importance of the comprehensive plan team that's comprised of really people from the public. So it's, you know what I mean? So I recognize all that value, and that's kind of my concern. So thank you for the I guess I'll take that as a blessing to kind of move forward. I'll I'll request that.
Well, I mean, it being that it's going through the scrutiny of the boards and committees, and you're concerned that that's not that shouldn't be the final look, that the comprehensive plan committee should be, if they haven't already been contacted to to give it one last look before it's sort of wrapped up and tied up in a bow and sent off to the you know, the boards for for review. I know the comp plan is is one document that's going to be coming to us shortly. The uniform base code is in the final stages of being completed, and that's going to ordinance committee in June. So that'll be coming to us shortly. And then we have the conservation subdivision redraft that has been going through a lot of scrutiny and review, and that's about ready to be presented. So there's a lot of things happening. But again, I know specifically, Ryan, you have a concern with the comp plan code. You did spend a lot of work time and work on it. And want to make sure that you're happy with the end product, so. Check with Sarah. Check with Sarah. Tell her what your concerns are. I'm sure she's willing to work with you in terms of either a postponement or some sort of postponement so you can get your get your last look. All right.
I want to have a meeting of the comprehensive plan team and to go over this stuff.
Okay.
I like.
I think you.
Tell her you need the time for that.
And Ryan, and so and one thing about, you know, not having the boards, what you called, you know, trump the 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 comprehensive team. I I think there might be something there in in terms of how the comprehensive plan is presented to these other boards. A lot of times, we'll just get it from the town, right? Boom, here it is, review it. Instead of having the comprehensive plan team present it to the boards and go through that so so they understand kind of the basis for why you made the decisions you made and what the the information you went through and the comments you received and all the work that you went through.
All the surveys.
The survey, all that, yeah, all that stuff. It that ought to be presented to every single one of the ordinance, whether it's the ordinance, the environmental us, the planning, everybody, all those teams, they it ought to be presented to them and not just sent over email and said, hey, give me your comments. So that that's just a consideration, something to think about.
Well, well received, Gary. Thanks.
And I guess I would recommend that the comprehensive plan committee take a look at New York State Town Law. Ryan, get your pen.
I take vehement. God, no, it's going back ears on each one of you.
Section 272-272-A. And I think that'll clarify some of the procedures that your committee has to undergo. I'm happy to help you with that, but you'll it's a couple paragraphs long. Take a look, and you'll I think you'll understand it, but give me a call if you need further guidance.
Can you repeat that again? 272A of municipal town code?
No, New York State Town Law.
Chris, I'm impressed you have it on the tip of your tongue. You must quote.
This ain't my first rodeo.
The Mr. Nadler, amazing. That was amazing.
Wow. Pulled it out of his hip pocket. All right, anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns? No?
Welcome, Shauna. I'll make a motion for this meeting at 8:10 PM.
Wow.
Second.
Thank you.
Good meeting, folks. Thanks, John. Thanks, Chris. Good meeting, folks, thanks, John, thanks, Chris, thanks, Shauna.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.